We can just do a check in and hopefully refine or dust off, but um I feel really good with what we're. About where it's led us so far this year, so um yeah.
I think of refresh, not refresh, I guess a check in. You should just check in this time and I I like what Council had said, I think it's when you have new people, maybe we go deeper. Still two, three years out, right? Still long term, so not an annual strategic plan, not a biannual. But a still longer lens, but we wait until there's new people.
So I'm gonna say this back to make sure I'm I'm capturing his sounds is if we are comfortable or city council is comfortable with a refresh or a check in. I'm asking also, I'm have a phone call with. Nine to tomorrow to start talking with this conversation, so I'll. I will be asking kind of framing that conversation with Michelle of of a refresh with some dates. In January and February and then we can come back and see what is the best option for for that refresh. Be you comfortable with that?
Yes, check and see when Metro Mayor's um retreat is. January gets to a little complicated with different things um. I was trying to think if there's anything else that major happens, if anybody sees something on your calendar. Right now and see.
Would you be comfortable with a Monday evening if it's a a refresh and that's the? Okay.
It needs to be not a Monday night.
Just a suggestion and maybe it's also a no, but um maybe we do the um. Our team, I I don't know if we're still doing team buildings since it's the same team, but we could maybe do that the same day, that in the morning and then. Planning it the afternoon and a whole Saturday. See some nodding there.
Usually when we were doing it before, I think they usually would have like a team building in the morning and then we would do the refresh. And I mean, for the refresh, it still doesn't have to be as long as the initial one, but I think it's good um. Even though it's the same group, like I think all of us know each other much better than we did. You know, when the new group came on a year ago, so I think that my experience is that team building is much different the second time through. Cause people are, you know, a little more humanized with each other, um because politics can dehumanize. Each other, it's just reality of it, so I I think that it's actually really helpful to have those two together because you kind of go through, it's kind of the icebreaker for the day. And then you just kind of dust it off and say, are we all still on track with our priorities?
And it saves time, it's more efficient, spend two Saturdays.
Thank you. Any questions or additional follow up between now and the next time we connect?
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for your feedback and again, this is just the beginning of the conversation, we'll continue to to connect along the way and pivot as we need to. I just wanna say thank you. I'm gonna just take pictures, I won't take pictures.
Yeah, and I'm uh thank Erin and thank uh Council, this feedback has been invaluable, so we will. We will be taking this into direct account and helping to design um and coordinate the strategic planning with the budget process this year. Taking all this feedback into account, I just wanted to highlight something that Erin had said, may have gotten lost in in the briefing, the briefing. That is um before the session, we uh did a similar session with the directors. Um in a room, but we didn't want to have that material brought in tonight, we wanted to hear your voices tonight. We'll now blend those for you when we bring back uh on November eighteenth, so you'll now get the department heads. Um input as well, which I think will build on tonight's um work with them as well, so you'll now see those two come together, so you'll have everything on the eighteenth.
Good evening. Uh try to run through this as quickly as possible to out of respect for everyone's time um. Counselor Zadi, something that you said during the. The seventy second Avenue study about meeting people where they are producing things in different ways, it's not just social media. Um it brought to mind a mailer that we are that we produce. Um for historic Westminster, it's about things that are coming, it's not plans, it's an idea, it's things that are gonna hit the road. Um it's gonna arrive in mailboxes um after Thanksgiving, but before Christmas. Uh and there's another part of it that is um that's gonna be the Westie Magazine as well. This is version. The one version prior to some uh some feedback that Jody gave us um. Printer witchcraft, I couldn't get the final version to print, but this one came out, it's like ninety five percent of the way there. Thank you, Barbara. Um tonight, I'd like to talk to you about two things. Um before we get into Access Westminster, I wanted to sort of revisit um the council engagement calendar. Um that we developed around this time last year. Um and your feedback, uh good, bad, ugly things that we can improve upon. Um ultimately, what this looks like to me is you is council is excited to like participate in these events. Because these, this is for you, it is not for me, it's not for staff, um and. Um we want you to be excited about it and like look forward to these events. That said, um I'm happy to use the prompts that I've added to the worksheet or we just have a conversation.
To start with, um is this gonna be handed out in mail or fly?
Oh, it's a it's a mailer, it's a it's folded, it's the text would be much bigger, um but. I I don't know how to print those things, so we I forced it on two eleven by seventeen. I'll hit every mailbox um in the historic Westminster neighborhood. We attempted to make it as a, what did I do, Abby? Um we attempted to make it as um accessible as possible and there on the bottom right, there's a QR code for Spanish translation. Eventually, we would love to be able to do both, but that that we have to balance some of the, we wanna see if this goes over well and if this is. If this this goes over well, we'll grow up the project a little bit more.
Just wanna give you my caveblers, cause this made me smile immediately, so whoever designed it, good job.
Oh, good.
And my first takeaway was it reminded me of the crazy world of Richard Scary. Which is fantastic, I think it's adorable and that's exactly what I want for my city, so it's just really cute and. Just I love it and it's very, it immediately pulls me in and I wanna read it no more, so good job.
Thank you, I will share that feedback with my team, I wish I could take heart out for it, but it's definitely my team I did it.
Yes, great.
Well, the mailer, the mail mailer, would the mailer have input? Um inability for someone to give you the feedback, that like, do you like this?
Oh, that's interesting. There are, there the that's one uh the edits that Jody gave us was uh multiple QR codes for each project. So you can go to the seventy second Avenue study, you go to Urban Park in the Cone Zone project, um so you can find.
Mailer will have those.
Yes, and uh and you can sign up for updates for the projects that you're interested in.
Love that.
That actually came from a community member, so we had the this version and sent it uh. Sent it out to three key community members from historic Westminster and they had a look at it for us. And the the tweaks that we made were based on their feedback, so.
Oh, that was the Gary Shea and.
Uh do you know? Debbie had looked at it um.
Thank you.
I do love this, but I would love to see some amount of translation on here, even if it's just the title.
Yeah. I I agree.
That's our great, this area has our greatest diversity and I wanna engage people. At all levels, so.
We learned a lot from our work with the municipal courthouse, there is a a. A significant Spanish speaking population that we need to, we we need to do a better job of it.
Okay, well, let's start here, you don't have to do everything, but you know, see what you can do, cause if you're gonna have. Um QR codes, you you may just need a shorter sentence that could be too different.
On the bottom right, there will be a QR code where we've translated everything, but then it. I I recognize like that that's the gap there, it's like, hey, here's a paper, it's in English, if you want the Spanish version, you you have to scan it. Open it up on your phone, like there that that's a that's a that's an inequity that we will have, well, we will address it.
Okay, cause you could just change the titles or something, you or not change the titles, but add. At least where it says like Newton Street Waterline, you know, just.
Thank you.
So they know what the heck it is.
No, that's really fair, that's all very fair.
Also, if they see something that's just all English, they might not think to like look to see if there's a QR code. And then if we're, there's some Spanish on there, it might draw their attention so that way they want more information.
Yeah, great, you gotta do a better job of it. I'm sorry, I that I that was meant to be like an interesting thing, I didn't mean for us to spend time on it, but um I'm glad it. I'm I'm glad we're making the right like a good first step. Um with regard to the the calendar, um I posted uh it's the the all the events from the past year that were council events. And the backside are is the proposed framework for twenty twenty five, um so. Um the questions I would have to, I would love to hear about is what went well this year, what could be improved upon? What can go, what can stay, um how can we, how can we make this better for council?
I think we need to see Parks and Recs, last year they had eighty one events, that helps us to make some. Calculated decisions of where forty thousand people are gonna be versus two hundred, um so we need that first.
Got it.
It would be helpful to know. I mean, if we look over this from this past year, um where do we feel like we have the best conversations? Um and like the moving apart, I just felt like I was handing stuff out. And didn't have as many good conversations as. Like when we were at the even on here.
Safety Town Hall, that was really good.
Yeah, I feel, yeah, the the. When we did the safety, it was the outdoors, I don't think it was this past year, I think it was in twenty three though, we had a booth at the safety. Public safety thing.
Well, we had one this year too.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That one I feel like is a good one, right? Um so just try trying to identify ones where we had good conversations with people and were able to. Like I I really liked the listening sessions.
Oh, good.
Um definitely because they're, you know, it is like when they're at, I'm trying to remember.
Heritage.
The Heritage, yeah, yeah, just because people come and they're there to talk.
And we have some other senior places that I think this year we could move around and. And catch another new one of those, I see you have Maker on there, but we've been there before, I just think we need new places. So we keep expanding and don't necessarily go back to where we've been.
Mayor, it sounds like you do like the listing session format, smaller intimate conversations with the target communities, is that accurate?
Well, some of them aren't so small.
Yeah.
Some of them are pretty good sized, when we went to uh Heritage, we had. Well, we had four um fire department check ins that night and. As we're looking out at the parking lot and I keep seeing a fire truck and an ambulance come and go, then no, then I saw police go. They had a warrant and so I'm going, things are really happening under, but that place was packed and standing. So um you know, whether it's um Keystone or one of the other places um. That's places down in in historic Westminster um. Move the love around.
Maybe you put it at a high school or something, cause we could get parents and kids to come, that'd be kind of cool. Do that a little bit to hear.
One of the, one of the uh notes that I received from, I think Counselor Zadi and Counselor Ireland were. Uh a desire for a town hall that was centered on students, is that something that would be interest of coun- to to council?
Well, it's gonna have to be students and parents or they can't get there.
Yeah.
We we could do all students of all ages or we could um target the leadership councils of the di- at different high schools as well, that's another way to do it.
That's cool. Get them engaged, I'm sure they're physical.
Had some staff go to Ralston Valley's um uh journalism program and those kids were. Like very gauge, asked really sharp questions, wanted to know how city government works. And that's something we we would definitely do.
And include our yappers.
Yeah.
Get them to get people there, yeah.
Then it's, uh so then the other part of that question is, there was also a s- a desire for HOA Town Hall?
Yeah.
Is that something that would be interesting?
No, they reach out to us somehow, again, we need to communicate with them. That a counselor can come to a meeting if they want to, want an update or something. I don't know that it needs to be all of us because they're gonna have specific issues, but um unless we had an all HOA meeting night. Um where you invited everybody, but. No matter what you do, they need to understand how they go about the process if they want somebody to come out and just chit chat with them.
So so I think the idea was the all HOA and that concept came from one of those HOA meetings, I forget which one. But.
It's Stratford Lakes.
Stratford, yeah, and it's really the the board, right? Of each HOA, you you invite them all, maybe they'll send one or two people. But since city is majority is sixty per sixty four percent HOA is Westminster. Is that the number? But that seems like maybe that would be a good idea, hear from them directly, put them all in one place. And they can ask us questions and have it be more interactive, cause they have their own issues that they are all trying to get. City services for and support for, could be a nice.
Maybe for that, as you're calling or emailing them or what however you're gonna contact them. What are the top? Five things that they're dealing with that they want answers to? And then we could break up and each of us have a table with that question and have our experts there.
Yeah.
Um like we did the town hall um to discuss and and have those conversations.
Rather than us just taking out and then later giving it to staff, have them right there.
Definitely, if we can have small, older HOAs plus larger HOA, they have different needs, you know?
That's the reason, if we know what the questions are, then they know which table to go to and um we don't waste their time either.
So it sounds like there's interest uh for HO and all HOA Town Hall, is that correct? Uh what about all students or perhaps families uh Town Hall?
Yeah, it's cool.
I also want to suggest again, just considering our discussion with the businesses over on one twentieth and that. Hold a special please, I was talking to them about how we integrate a little bit more and get more. You know, cars there, but also more presents, right? Um and I was talking to some of the, I think it was the landowner there. How maybe doing a town hall just to like get us present, I don't know if that's an idea, but this would be another town hall for businesses. Um but doing it in an area that we choose to be in area so that we're all present, you know, setting up, how are we set up outside? If they were interested in.
Police might not wanna set up up set up outside um. With what they're telling us is going on.
I was just trying to figure out how we integrate with them, you know, to be present and like, you know, we set up some tents and then that might help. Change the vibe of the community. We did a town hall there, yeah.
Counselor Dema.
I like the idea of something specifically for business, um but I feel like we have. I mean, we do a lot of different meetings with the businesses, but we have connections with all of them, obviously, cause they should have a business license if they're a business in the city. So maybe that's more of a natural business owner town hall kinda event where we specifically. Try to hear from the business community, cause I think that's a not a bad idea and I don't know that I've seen us do something like that specifically before.
Does that interest the group?
It's a good idea.
So it sounds like, so then this leads me to the next question, uh. This past year, each town hall was aligned to a strategic priority, should we adjust it to for this upcoming for twenty twenty five to audiences?
Sounds like it.
Issues and audience, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the businesses is gonna be first responders. And we listen to what these folks are dealing with, it's pretty scary.
To the mayor's point about the other one, with the questioning, the pre-question, the pre correlation of the questions, you could do it for all of them, I think.
Yeah.
The the business one, get the top, get the experts in the room with us, intimate, small conversations.
And then the all city or all residents for everybody's businesses, I'm sorry, Counselor Dema.
I was just gonna say, I would say yes and, because I mean, we're still, we still govern everything we do by that strategic plan, so. When we're catering to audiences, I'd like to know from each of those audiences how they feel the strategic plan is doing. I mean, I feel like it would be a missed opportunity, like how does the youth feel about what their government's doing, how do the business communities feel? So I mean, I I'm cool with us having the different audiences, but I do, I wouldn't wanna completely steer away from our strategic priorities.
So I'm spitballing here, but uh as I'm hearing the mayor uh and other members of council. I wonder if it's next year for Q one, we have preparedness and resilience. So then uh with what the mayor said, we make that uh the of the business uh owners and we talk about preparedness and resilience. Public safety.
I would put it more central though, so that people can get there.
Okay, and then the budget is the budget and we'll we'll move it into April. So we have more community engagement, does that sound right?
Well, we're we're gonna, we're gonna factor that in from.
Yeah.
So tonight, that's probably gonna be earlier.
Okay, even earlier, okay, and then robust infrastructure, I wonder if that goes for HOAs.
Well, here's my question, instead of trying to tie the audience to the issue, assuming that's gonna be their issue. I'd prefer that we do the town halls based on issues and the community listening sessions. We have very distinct, who do we wanna listen to, we've just listed all the audiences we wanna listen to.
Okay.
Uh maybe there's just one more, like something around housing, um but um. I feel like we have a pretty good list for who we're gonna listen.
I think that, yes, we can ha- we can absolutely do that, here, let me pose some challenges to that. Um for the listening sessions, they are typically in the in one central area where all the folks already live there or. Part like or in close proximity to that area, to that building. If we were to do a listening session for students, that would just be a town hall and at that point, I I I wonder if we just livestream and like. It's 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 sort of a a much bigger deal at that point. Does that make sense? Or like an all HOA or um all small businesses?
Did you say? Tell me again what you said.
Um so the, in this past year, our listening sessions were tied to specific communities. And they all live in the same place, so all their needs like fed upon themselves and it was um easier. It was easy to sort of make that happen, um if we were to do an all student or an all small businesses. If that would be citywide outreach and at that point, it would, it would just be a town hall. And if then if we were doing that, why, why wouldn't we livestream and do all the other things that we do with it? So then now we're doubling up on our town halls, so that that's the pros and cons of it.
Hate when you use logic.
Um uh we could, we could do a presentation, like a thematic, what we've done, and this is what council likes is. Uh the last couple of town halls, we did a brief staff presentation. And the conversations surely were sort of centered around that presentation, but there was just, there was also lots of like organic conversations that went all. In all different directions, I wonder if we can, if that would work.
Preparedness and resilience could definitely be, well, I don't know, you I mean, you could. Fit these audiences into the town halls, cause I can see quality of life fitting that school.
I'm not sure if you need to stratify it all, right? By stratify the priorities, I think each one we should go over, what do you think about all the parties? Rather than having it be specific each one, so we focus more on the stakeholder, the audience. Hear what they have to say, but then we also have a segment of that meeting where we talk about the strategic plan and what they think of. The whole thing, with the all of it, rather than splitting it into pieces.
I like that one, except for the budget one, you know, the budget.
Except for the budget.
But all the others, I don't see why we're not talking about everything.
I'm just wondering at this point if you have enough to come back with some suggestions.
I'm happy to.
And and the mayor's point, the list of the events, because.
The one I take out is Farmer's Market, I think there's other places that we can have better conversation. And um I would just take that one off the list.
Agreed, maybe there's something that we liked on this first one there.
Could ask two more questions. Are there less, would you like less events or more events?
Less.
Oh, I love that, yeah, less events.
I think, you know, the eight that that are sitting here are just fine.
I think it's a good number.
Okay, um and then question four on the prompt sheet for the telephone town hall, it's about um. Robust infrastructure and um uh Director. Uh Nipoll and and John Burke uh have volunteered to provide a brief um presentation. For like ten minutes at the start of the telephone town hall, is that okay? Does that work for council?
Those are so short, I hate giving a presentation on those town halls, it goes like that.
It does.
Yeah, I I don't think that's the place for them.
Let's save them for next year.
Okay. All right. Should I quit? Would you like me to quit?
Well, alls I have to say is. And I I'm trying to think of all the, there's certain things that, like in January, we always have the Metro Mayor's. Um retreat, I don't know what others that you're on different boards and stuff, so. We need you checking in with um whoever sees, can see our calendars um. To know, so so that we're not having to make a hard decision of what do we go to.
Got it, yeah, lot of double book.
Yeah, there there were times this year, I I could have cloned myself five times and not made everything.
Be so quick and shameless, I promise.
Shameless last word.
Yeah.
And allow me to to recap before Andy moved on to the next part of the uh discussion. We're hearing three um audience focused town halls, one with students. Uh one with HOAs and one with business owners, uh and that we will survey them ahead of time around their top five issues, we'll use that to build. Format of the town hall with breakout tables, uh with subject matter experts at each table that coincides with those questions. And we'll leave a section of each town hall to talk about the strategic plan and check alignment um from from them, does that sound about right?
I just think if we know what their concerns are, we'll have the right people there and not waste somebody else's time that we think they might. Or whatever. Just having the right people in the building would be good.
Yes, and and avoid what uh Mayor Portem said, which is trying to to push an issue to an audience, we'll. Get the issues from them and then we'll leave a band of each session.
We're just.
Our strategic plan, yeah.
So speaking of being uh customer focused, resident focused, this is the part of Access Westminster that we wanted to talk to you about. Um Access Westminster, it's uh it's our customer service portal, this has anyone you used it?
I hate it, I won't use it, I use the police departments, because it I can do it like that in a GIS's. I can click my phone.
Yes.
Get the icon up and when I see graffiti or whatnot, hit it and it will keep the GIS until I can stop at a stoplight. And tell them where the graffiti is, I I am so sick of this one, I haven't used it for two years.
I think of that fe- feedback, that's exactly what we needed to hear, does anyone else have? Is it similar, right? Similar? Uh as a resident, I I have some feelings about it as well, it's not a very, it's not a very good product. Um it's hard on residents, but it's also really hard on staff and it seems like everybody loses, we it forces. We, it forces everything over emails, so instead of having less emails, we get more emails. And we answer the same questions over and over again, but it's never cataloged anywhere, so. Whether it be weeds or mosquitoes, we answer the same, like, I know, I know Lance Johnson's job really well. Of those exact questions. Back in twenty twenty one, um, we, we didn't close um tickets out. Uh, in a, in a reasonable amount of time, I think we had, it, the limit was ten days and we typically took, it took more than ten days and at that point. That's, that's fairly frustrating to everybody, so in um twenty twenty three, when we sort of took over this project. We sort of uh made some process improvements, we um, we cut everything down by five days and for the most part. We were able to resolve them in three to five days, not just respond, but resolve them. Uh, we per, we create a governance structure uh on top of it, so. When folks weren't responding in, on time, we sort of followed up with staff and like really made sure we to put these tickets along. Because of those process improvements, we saw a fifty percent increase in um group service requests, which we think is a good thing. We think that when folks submit tickets and they get responses, they submit more tickets. Um, the current structure is very bureaucracy focused, it's, it's, it's inward facing, it's organized by the department, not by the community. It's overgrown, you, uh, an, an average resident would have to know how the bureaucracy works in order to do anything. But for example, there's over forty options for water related issues alone. We did that because every, every time you click the button, it would send an email directly to that staff person as opposed to. Making it easy for residents, we made it easy on staff.
Water quality for homebrewers.
So that means we got one question about that, they got lost and so.
Yeah, so, so we, we're gonna, we're gonna make some process changes with Access Westminster um two point O. We're going off of the C Click Fix platform, it's what Adco uses. So now if you live in Shaw Heights in that Swiss cheese area, you don't need to know what part of the boundary am I, am I on? If you are in Westminster, you'll get Access Westminster's menu, if you are in the uh unincorporated side, you get. Uh, Adco's menu and from the residence perspective, oh, it should be seamless, we, we'll, we'll see.
Do you have to have a password to get in here?
You, you'll have to create your own account, you can do it.
That's what I hate, I don't have to do that on the police one.
You can do it anonymously, we're, I think, what we would like to do is encourage folks to create an account. So that we can start seeing uh councillor Azadi's, all of his tickets and seeing, okay, what, what are the things? That this person really cares about and then we can also create heat maps around, like, where are the issue areas?
I'll continue using the police.
And then um, uh, the, the, the mobile app will have an improved geolocation um. Feature, you can take pictures, it'll geotag it, um, and it's all, it'll be a, an app first experience. As opposed to right now, which is a desktop experience, over ninety one percent of the tickets in Access Westminster submitted through a desktop. Which is kind of odd, but. Uh, we'll also be able to keep track of everything and all the conversations, so there'll be a record of. Uh, councillor DeBod submitted a ticket, we responded, we resolved and it's all tracked there. And what we hope to be able to do is, one, create heat maps around weeds. Where, where are the hotspots and then we'll go back and, and can we proactively address it before we get this raft of um. Service request and, and because nothing will be done over email, it'll build a knowledge base. And eventually, what we like to do is push all that uh helpful information into a chat, an AI chatbot. So that we don't have to, that's that, um, residents won't have to wait twenty four, forty hours for a response. A chatbot will tell you, will tell you exactly what, what you need to do to get things resolved.
Are the users anonymous?
It can be anonymous, that's an option, but we're uh encouraging folks to create accounts.
I heard you, I just wondered if you'd actually see their names, but it sounds like yes, okay.
Yeah, um, we, I, in.
When you say encourage them, does, does, does that mean it's required?
It's, it's not required.
So to the mayor's question.
No, there's an anonymous, you can click anonymous if you'd like, but we're gonna. We're gonna put the onus on ourselves, do some education around the benefits of creating a login. So you, you can create a record for yourself, but if you wanna just.
You have to remember the password, that's the thing, or it says it doesn't work, yeah.
No, you don't know, it's anonymous, so this new app, you can take graffiti, you can take a picture, it catalogs it and it's. Anonymous user, yada, 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 here's the issue, we can resolve it.
Well, with the policeman, I just put my name in it, but I don't have to have, I, I can access it like this for what I need. It GIS's it and then I add my name and stuff, but I don't have to have a stupid password, that's what I hate. In access, because it always would say, you know, whatever.
Food for thought, a lot of these platforms now are doing, where if it's, you can do a. Uh, profiles linked to your cell phone so that you're not actually having to remember a password, they have you set one, but they'll like text you. If you wanna get in, it just texts you and it authenticates you, so might be additional. Way, but I would say to the point of anonymity, I wanna make sure that you always keep something, because some people just don't want you tracking them. Yeah, still wanna serve those people.
Yep, um, we've also revised the, the structure, so now we've prioritized the, the high. The, the most common related uh service inquiries and anything else that's not that. It goes to, you can't find my ticket and you can just move on and it will be staff's responsibility to figure out who gets this inquiry. We're putting the, the, the onus on ourselves to make this experience as simple as possible.
I don't see graffiti.
With graffiti in particular, we, we've worked out some um process improvements around that, the. Staff is pretty good about removing graffiti, one of the thing, one of the challenges that we were able to identify with new training. Was we would remove the graffiti, but then we wouldn't close the ticket, so what a, a, a misunderstanding that would happen is. We would resolve the graffiti, but because we didn't close the ticket for nine months, nine months later, you'd get an email that said. Staff's responded to your thing, so now a residence thinks it took us nine months to do it, when we really did it in days.
Does the resident need to select the issue from this, from this?
These are the easy dropdown menus, but if they don't want to, they can just go straight to can't find my issue, that's the very first thing. And they can just write it in and, and a human, someone on my team will funnel it through the, the right um. Spot, yes councillor?
A suggestion on the items that they click on is just ideas, because I get folks come to me with, this is, I'd like to see this.
Oh, okay.
Or, or new suggestion, whatever you wanna call it.
Got it, oh, that's really constructive, yep, we can definitely do that. Um, and then we have a, as, again, as part of this revised governance structure, staff will meet on a quarterly basis. To adjust as needed, if we see new things coming up that we need to create a new button for. And, or buttons that aren't helpful anymore, we take them away, so it actually grows and changes with the community's needs, so nothing gets stale and old. Benefits, um, we hope that at the end of this, we get fewer emails. Um, cause I don't think anyone wants a lot of emails and then we can track all the conversations, so we can demonstrate. Our uh, our effectiveness and responsiveness to the community, but then it's also creates more accountability both. Um, for staff, because then now we, we can see, are we closing out these tickets? And then it also informs future decision making, because we're gonna identify, quickly identify trends and we'll, we'll be able to get ahead of the problem.
Um, will council still get emails for the council?
Um, if you go back to this, on the far right says council invitations, uh, contact city council. That's a, that's a question for council, would you like us to keep that? Would you like us to make, make adjustments?
I like the emails personally, so please don't take away.
What's the alternative, I mean, I, I want the communication, but I mean, on these platforms, usually it's more beneficial if I could have a thread. Um, you know, where if you guys answer, you know, I'm notified as a quote unquote. You know, solution person, so I'd be curious to know what the, the options are that give us the contact, but allow us to be able to utilize the platform.
But um, what we have now is when someone submits a ticket, they can tag city council and it will push an email to everybody. And then you can go on to the platform and track that ticket, if you like. That's the way, like, we're trying our best to push as much of the transactions out of emails as possible, so we can keep a record of everything.
I think it'd be very beneficial for us to be able to at least see, see that, because in the past, we've tried to do dashboards. To some very success, uh, even our own requests to staff. Um, for a while, we had a dashboard and we could see how long it was or where it was at, because sometimes we'll shoot those things off to you and. You don't get back to us, I may forget about it, because I get a lot of them, so. It's not until somebody says, hey, you haven't answered me for, you know, but I did the part I was supposed to and I passed it off to staff. Um, you know, so it would be interesting to be able to kinda follow the things that, that we put in.
Yeah, would you like us to create accounts or?
I, I would be interested, I'd be interested to see the statistics around it too, I mean, at the end of the day, there may be. As you develop this and it may not be iteration one, but as you start building out a knowledge base and stuff, um, you know. Why couldn't council be able to just point people to those knowledge bases? I mean, obviously, we want to get people to the right staff, but sometimes if it's just a simple. Hey, how, you know, what's the, um, what did somebody ask me today? They wanna know if we still sprayed for mosquitoes. Be able to, you know, provide the knowledge base articles that you guys would do and. Connect people faster straight to the information they're looking for, so it, it may be an opportunity.
That's exactly what we wanna do, that's, that, that's the end state.
So my, I, my opinion on it is similar, but a little different where I like the personal touch. Uh, I want people to keep, to not feel like I'm just giving them an article, you know, or something that exists. Because I think we need to build, keep building that trust between government and people. And it's, it helps when they can talk to us and interact with us, um, so some kind of mix that. Makes it efficient for staff, but doesn't take away the humanity element of the, the personal touch. Which is why I like the emails, I don't want those taken away, but I like the option of having access to the. System if I wanna see the history, but I don't wanna access the inquiries via the system. Without the email, that makes sense, I kinda wanna.
The same thing though, I mean, you, in, in, you know, not to interrupt, but I wanna, I'm just wanna make sure that I understand. Like in these kind of platforms, like Zendesk is one that I've put in place recently at a company. Um, what my staff is usually trained to do, this was how I would see this for me as a council member, as if. Andy emailed me and said, hey, I'm upset about this pothole, I'd say, okay, um, I'm gonna give you the information, here's what you can do. I would provide that article and then say, is that what you need? So then the next time they have that article, and so that's usually from a customer service perspective, how I train people that, you know. So it still gives that personal feel, um, you would have, in my experience, about fifty percent of the time, people start going and fishing for the answers themselves. Cause they'd prefer to do that, but then there's the people who wanna call and talk to your representative or customer service person, so. I'm, I agree, I wanna be able to do that and be able to contact them, but I also wanna be able to connect them, so that if they decide they wanna start self-serving. You know, they, they can, um, because I had to imagine that saves some of our time and staff time and still gives that personal. Touch that people wanna get.
Uh, uh, we're gonna kinda do both, where if someone emails, what we'll also do is respond with the answer and say. We've so, um, uh, we've submitted your request into the system, this is the ticket number and here's the, here's the solution. So you can see in the email, but what we hope is that they'll also click the link and like explore the platform, so there's an education component, we're not gonna.
That's smart.
We can't make people do anything, so we have to.
And that link that for the ticket, they can just click it and see it without logging in?
Exactly, yeah, the, it's, oh, I'm sorry, the knowledge base is public, that's the, the. The, the goal of all of this is like, when we build that knowledge base, all, it will be a public record, you don't need to log in, you, you can just scan for it, so. We're fairly confident that many of these issues are the same issues and we'll be able to find it, okay. Mayor, this slide wasn't for you, this is, we, we, this is something we're proud of, it's the GIS component of this. The mapping features where we can see all the dots, where are the problems, where are the clusters, so we can get ahead of the issue. We are beginning to uh implement uh training and it'll go live in January with the new website.
Congrats on getting that done.
And I hopefully I ran through this quickly enough.
I like the mapping feature.
Oh, I do too, I, I have a lot of potholes to complain about.
Oh, me too.
I'm, I'm one hundred percent a pothole component. The worst.
Okay, we're adjourned.